Recording has begun.
Thank you very much. Welcome to our Town Council Work Session today, March 8th, 2022. I'm going to start off by a roll call. Councilman Goldsmith.
Yeah.
Councilman Trauncher.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
And Mayor James is present. If you all would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to all the holy saints, one man, my nation, I am your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we are going to skip our first matter of council discussion, 2.1, and we're going to go right into 2.2, which is the Personnel Handbook update. The request to change from the police to be Calea accredited. Chief, if you want, come on down here.
Sure. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody's doing well. As you're aware, the Police Department has been working through its remote assessment with a compliance manager from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. All of our standards that were examined were found to be in compliant with law enforcement best practices. Big thank you to Jackie DeSoto for putting that together. While we were examining the standards versus our policies, we realized that there were some voids between the Police Department's written directives and the town's personnel manual. And most of it was just additional guidance is given in the Police Department's written directives that isn't in the personnel manual. So for brevity, I didn't attach all of it. I include or included it in the letter. I included the Calea standards. So as an example, you have that packet and Calea standard 26.1.4. The town personnel manual discusses counseling as a function of discipline. It also talks about punitive actions. One of the things it does not address is training as a function of discipline. And we use it quite frequently in the Police Department when we have disciplinary matters that are minor in nature. Basically, because we have so many written directives, training is a big part of that. So what we're asking is inclusion into the personnel manual language similar to that in the Police Department's written directives. And then in the performance evaluation system, we would like to see, because a lot of what we do addresses sworn members more than it does civilian members. So we rely on the town's personnel manual for direction for our civilian staff, much more so than our in department written directives. So in each one of these Calea standards, the town either's personnel manual is either kind of silent on how it's done or there isn't as much guidance that it's given in the Police Department's written directives. So in Calea standard 35.1.1 talks about the personnel evaluation system itself having performance measurement definitions, what's a one, what's a two, what's a three, et cetera. Procedures on how to use the form. And a lot of that's written on the form itself, but we kind of regurgitate that into our written directives. The responsibility of the raiders, those who are preparing the evaluation and what type of training. We have a very simplistic PowerPoint presentation that we would give to anybody who wants it that we run our supervisors through on the correct way to do a performance evaluation. And we modeled it after the current system that the town uses. Annual evaluations that are required and documented. 35.1.4 talks about the, you will be rated on the specific assignment that you had during the rating period. 35.1.5 is, as you can see, is multi bulleted. But again, it just gives those who are preparing performance evaluations guidance on how to do it and make sure that we're consistent, not only in the Police Department, but across the entire town. 35.1.6 requires someone whose performance is unsatisfactory, that they be notified and given time to make corrections, as long as it can be done. You know, if you really mess up 10 months into the rating period, it might be tough for you to kind of recover. But you at least, no two, we have a rule, no two is ever surprised to anybody in our department. You know it's coming. And then employee consultation, we spend a lot of time with this on each employee. They're presented their evaluation. They're told what to expect during the next rating period. And then we do career counseling with them during that same time when we try to pick what type of trainings that helps us budget. And it also helps each person to choose a career path. And it's our job to try to help them get there. The other part of the conversation that I wanted to bring up in Greenbelt, we had a situation that came in the Police Department that dealt with intellectual property. After we lived through that, we went to the city solicitor who prepared a statement that we include in our written directives, the Police Department. But it's about intellectual property that while you're working for the town and you're being paid by the town, the work product that you produce is owned by the town. So when you retire, you can't go, I'm taking this with me and blanking out computers because that's what we had happening in Rebuild. So we put this in as intellectual property. We cover it during the FTO period. We talked to our officers about it. Your work product is the work product of the town of La Plata or La Plata Police Department. But those are the inclusions that we would like to see. It would help our written directives live in concert with the town's personnel manual.
Thank you very much. Council, I'm going to open up the floor. I provide my feedback.
Thank you, Chief. For this is, you answered some of my questions, but this is good. So just for clarification, so you use the town's HR policies? And then you have a separate or an addendum for the police office?
We do, and ours is more expanded. You know, we don't contradict. The only thing that we found that was really different in its, the town's personnel manual says that an employee may request a copy of their evaluation and they're given to it. Calea standards requires us to give you a copy when we present you your final evaluation so you can have it for your records and future needs. But it's really not in conflict. You're still going to get it, you just have to request it.
And so you have to get in the way. So it's an annual period. When does the annual rating period begin? Is it fiscal year or is it the date of hire or you work?
Well, we followed what the town had used historically. When I first got here, though, you may remember there were no evaluations. And then we came up with the evaluation system. So it worked, if I remember recall correctly, October was the rating period and it had to be done by November 1. And then that's when merit pay kicked in. But we have stayed consistent with that. That can be switched if need be, but that's the rating period we've been using as an agency.
So when you sit down with an officer at the beginning of the rating period, he or she has an expectation of what they're expected to do. For the company, you have certain goals or standards and they're told that at the start of the rating period.
Exactly. And then we listen to them, things that they'd like to see. So yeah, it's a, it's a good time of conversation and communication.
And is there any quarterly or semi annually? And it's not, it's a probably good consultation, counseling to kind of see where they are. And they can ask questions, how am I doing? Are there any, which gives you an opportunity to make any corrections or training?
Yeah, we don't do it formally. We, we sit down with the sergeants quarterly and talk with them. And then they take back to their squads. We have a rather, I'm not going to say robust disciplinary system. And when I talk about disciplinary system, I also mean commendations. It's all to us, it's all part of, you do good, you do bad. It's all falls in that same umbrella. So as you have seen, I think that when we see good work, we're quick to send out a commendation about it and award the officer. But we make the sergeants or the supervisor sign stating that they sat down with the officer, went over a career development, and we have a separate career development form.
And then does this need any legal review?
I don't, well, we just went through it with, we would just went through it with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement, and they found it within best practices. So we can always do it, but.
Just didn't know. And then, so what has to happen to incorporate these? I mean, I'm not sure what the next step is.
We've, we will work with the manager to show the language that's in our general orders. And I think from there, we'll just kind of wordsmith it through to see what works best for the organization. But one thing we don't like is that, I would say, just kind of a silence between the two written directives. I don't think it bodes well, especially if it would go to the negative side and you would have some sort of follow up with an employee. I think you want it to live in concert with each other.
And then just a commentary, you know, I'm not an expert in HR, but having experienced the good and the bad, I'm heartened to see this process, you know, annual counseling and tell them expectations. It's a conversation and you incorporate training, which is important. So I just want to congratulate and commend you for doing that. That's very, very important.
Well, thank you. It helps us with budget preparation to a training.
Just more importantly, it helps maintain the force, but also a professional force.
We try.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Anything from anyone else?
It just gives more explanations and anything along that.
Just one question, Chief, and thanks for putting this together. I think any way that we can more objective measures for not just disciplinary actions, commendations, just the overall department is a good thing. I was curious as to, you don't have to give me the same intellectual property scenario, but if you could give me an example as to how this language may protect the town if somebody were leaving.
Well, how it would have helped us, and I can go back to the situation somewhat. We had somebody who had developed training modules. And because they were going to be transferred back to the road, they decided to retire. Took all the training modules with them, wiped everything off the computer. So go back and recreate that. It took time and talent and it shouldn't have to have to been done. But what you do during your, when you're on the clock for the town is the town's product.
I agree.
And I don't know if you knew Bob Manzi or not, but he was a, did a lot with municipal governments up in Prince George's County. So he, he had written this, put it together. I'm sure we'll have our attorney look at it, but this is kind of pretty standard language from what I've seen.
Councilman Jenkins mentioned as far as just this blur.
Thank you very much. Just a couple comments or questions. I see where it says the written directive should encourage training. I'm sure if there is something that is very egregious, we would not even have the training. It would be, we would not have, we'd skip that step. So just so that it's out there in the open, we don't go.
Minor, minor is training, minor is counseling. We'll find it with minor violations of policy. We have a 500 page policy manual. I can't expect them to memorize everything. But I do want them to know their force policy. I want them to know their pursuit policy, things such as that, how to handle a domestic, because that's the stuff that comes back and you better be able to recall it quickly. So we use training as part of it. A lot of times, even if it's a letter of reprimand that goes to somebody or beyond that, where we take days or whatever the punishment might may be, training can still be a part of that to where we go. You don't want to have this happen again because you just got a letter of reprimand. You don't want to go to the next level. So usually ours is like an onion. You may get that letter of reprimand, but there's also training that comes along with it. Policy review, things such as that. So this is just one tool in the toolbox for the Police Department and the town to have for minor violations.
And I really like that it's written down and it will be adopted that should the council have a consensus to move forward on this. But there, it takes away the guesswork. I mean, it's just, here's, here's what will happen. So I do really commend you for having this. And I think it is a great addition to the policy, not only for the police, but for the town staff in general. So thank you for that. And Brent, if I am right on this, we just need a consensus to move forward with this and adopt this. We've heard that the attorney might need to review the intellectual property segment on it or any of it.
Yeah, the path I would recommend would be, as you stated, the legal review, but also for us to draft legislation to come back to council for a final vote with much more of the specifics. This is very, very broad introduction. So we could draft legislation that would be specific to which section of the Personnel Code will be amended, things of that nature.
Do you think that this could be accomplished by our business meeting in two weeks?
That will be our goal.
Okay, good, good. So I'm going to ask council this evening, do you have a consensus to move forward and to see this possibly in legislative form in two weeks?
Yes, I support to move on, move forward.
All right, then we will move forward on this. Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. And July 1, the disciplinary matrix, I've been on that committee for the Chiefs Association, will be adopted. And it is, I think, like 18 pages long. It is, there is a whole lot to it with every little infraction and where it falls. So it's going to take a lot away from the Chiefs as far as their ability to discipline their own people. But.
Yeah.
Annapolis handcuffed us and they knew it.
Yep.
So.
I know we've been fighting up there, the legislative committee has been. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie, you want to come down here? We're going to, we're going to have you up here. Come on down. We're looking forward to your St. Mary's safety study.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. You can use that remote to forward the slides.
Oh, good. I can see them too. Name it who?
Name it at the booth.
At the booth. All right, forward and back, how about that? Okay, great. For the record, Jamie Kendrick, Meaden Hunt, we've become your resident traffic engineer, transportation planner, and all around good guy, if I don't say so myself. So I would say about eight weeks ago, Brent asked us to take a look at the intersections of St. Mary's at Centennial and at Glen Albin Road and provide recommendations for improvement, if any. We go through a rather standard set of analyses on, on these types of safety studies. Traffic volumes, speeds, crash history, and then do field observations with site distance. And sometimes we'll interview adjacent property owners. I think we spoke with, is it Lieutenant Bagley from the Police Department as well? And then we run up against, run that through a battery of tests under the Maryland Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. But the best part of that manual, if I may, is the part where it says, use good professional engineering judgment. Because sometimes the warrants, as we call them, are rather strict and don't make a lot of sense in certain environments. So they may work really well on a US 301 and not work so well on a St. Mary's Street at Centennial Glen Albin. So one of the things that frustrates me about traffic warrants, for example, is while the left turn isn't warranted because enough people aren't making the left turn. Well, they're not making the left turn because it's unsafe to make the left turn. It's a very circular traffic engineering logic. And I am not one, but I try and follow their advice for legal reasons as much as I can. So Centennial, let's sort of Centennial. I'm not 1,000% sure I understand some of the history of the request. So we just kind of, you know, put our thinking caps on and went at it. One observation was that the speed was the issue on St. Mary's. Another observation was that people couldn't see and were edging out into the road. We did not find much of a crash history there, which is one of the warrants. But again, the warrants don't take into account near misses, right? There's no crash history. We can't improve things while there's whatever. So speed really isn't the issue. Surprisingly, speed along St. Mary's was actually the 85th percentile speed. The average speed was at 24, if I recall correctly. It really was that people were nosing out into the road to see around signs, around trees, around parked cars. And on St. Mary's, you know, traffic engineers like to take things incrementally. So our recommendation at St. Mary's at Centennial would be simply to start with, you know, removing some of the obstructions, trimming back some of the trees. When the leaves come on, maybe asking a property owner to move a sign that's in the way. Maybe asking a property owner to restrict parking that blocks some of the site distance on the northeast corner and the southwest corner. Yes. Those are the kind of first steps. That said, if you don't find that to be effective or don't find that to be acceptable, a, a legal justification can be written for installing an always stop control there. Excuse me. Glen Albin Road is a little bit different. The, it's not all that different, I should say. Except we come to the conclusion that we should just move forward with the always stop control. The speeds are a little higher, you know, one in, I think it's eastbound, the speed is 30 and westbound it's 25. But in both cases, speeds are just slightly above the posted limit, but not significantly. But again, the obstructed views really are the issue, seeing over the berms around the corner, around the house and the like. And here, based on volumes, speeds, we think that a always stop control is perfectly warranted. So we were recommending installing those. And that really is the extent of my reporters.
Well, that was short and sweet. Um, one of the pictures you have up there, it's the St. Mary's at Centennial, the intersection there. And Chief, I'm going to call you up here too, because I know that you've been working on this and you have some intel on it. This has been, conversation is going on years and years. So if you wouldn't mind, but this one right there on the bottom. Oh, we have received several, several phone calls. And the chief has gone out there and looked at it and his, his team has. We don't control that at all. And it, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it says no SUV or truck parking.
It does, but usually there are larger profile vehicles that park there. That's the challenge with that.
So we have no way of, as it is presented, enforcing that. Am I right with that?
Because that's. We understand these are not owned by the town, the parking, so.
Bolton, I think, owns or that building. So with that said, is there a way that something happens that we can encourage others not to park there with the authority of doing that?
I think the ultimate end comes just to getting all with talking. In terms of, you know, they, it's now, if I recall correctly, was, it's no lock in the right of way. It's private property from the curb line back. If I recall from what Janine told me. So yeah, that does kind of limit your options.
Enforcement perspective, yeah.
The thing is, we would have to work with the property owner. And we had talked about, since it would be, you know, without knowing, we didn't want to go in there and say if the property owner agrees to eliminating those spaces to go in there and run a curb line across. We wanted to sort of go with a temporary solution.
Pollards, planters, you know, the water barrels.
Without, you know, permanently.
But they're supposed to be low enough profile to not obstruct the view.
That way, if we do see that there's no improvement and we want to go back to a four way solution, if you will, then those spaces can come back into play because your site distance reduces greatly at a four way intersection compared to a two way. So this would be a temporary solution. It would be sort of an evaluation period with these temporary solutions. I think the upper picture, you see the public works vehicle parked to the, I guess, the edge of pavement, which also restricts at the stop bar sort of the site distance, looking down towards the green turf.
And that's at the old mud mug.
Right.
Yeah, and I have noticed that on weekends, I don't know if there's tenants typically park there, but there are some higher profile vehicles that park there during the weekends when there's not as much activity in the downtown. And to further complete things, I was driving yesterday down St. Mary's Avenue, about to take a left down Centennial, and an elderly driver was heading across St. Mary's on Centennial. And the car in front of me had stopped waiting for oncoming traffic. And the elderly driver then proceeded across. It was one of the near misses that you referred to, Jamie. So I think in some people's perception, for some reason, they see this as a four way stop sign. And it may be because of the crosswalks, which you don't have in a lot of the intersections in town. But you know, for whatever reason, a lot of the near misses that I visually observe seems to be confusion. They think it's already a four way stop.
Oh, and we have had that as well with the new driver. He was taking the left and boy, thank goodness, we had just come from church because I think that's the only thing that saved us as he's crossing traffic. But you know, with this one on the second, on the bottom, I, and Chief, you have explored this. I know years ago about four way stop, and there was some grumbling on that because of backing up possibly to Charles Street if there's a lot of traffic that way. The confusion, of course, there's always the newness to it that people don't realize that. I know that one of the corners, I think it's Centennial, the other, the opposite side, there was a retaining wall there until one of the priests took it out years ago. So he crashed into that.
Driving or?
That dis, yeah, eliminated that distraction. But my concern is with the, with the four way stop, that it may back up traffic. I don't know if it's necessary yet. If we do the park it, parking there, parking there, that when we do put the bollards or whatever there, that might be a nice place for that street art there to kind of have the bollards and it's a low profile, you're not having anything come up if the owners of that agree to do that. And, and also when you get down, I'm sure you noticed it too, coming on to the end of St. Mary's, going on to Charles Street, there's a sign that has been well loved that says there's no left turn between seven and nine and 3:30 and six, which is not adhered to at all. Is that necessary? So right down the end of the street going on to Charles Street, during those periods, you're not allowed to make, not allowed to make a left turn on there. Did you see that sign?
No, we didn't, wasn't looking for it, sorry.
But it was, it's well loved.
You know, I'm not, I mean, my gut tells me that the volume is not significant enough to need such a sign, but.
No, it is difficult and we've had complaints and the, and the chief, I'm sure can probably add more to this conversation than I can. But we've had complaints about not being able, the visibility right there, turning left, especially when the beautiful flowers are out or the bushes have overgrown a little bit. The line of sight is diminished quite a bit. So I would love to hear, I'd love to hear that speed is not an issue. That's good. And that it's just people nudging out. And I, and I do think that Glen Albin, again, Chief, you've done enough looking at this one too. Glen Albin might be a really good four way on that one because of the hill.
Yep, it is. And with the.
Yeah. St. Mary's and Centennial, maybe not so much, but Glen Albin, absolutely. Council, I'm going to open it up to you for comments.
And, thank you.
Councilman Jenkins?
Well, thanks for doing this and I applaud the town and the staff for pursuing this because this is thing, I think we need to do more of this. And I think the mayor, you touched on it and I would just put out there. I mean, I understand this, this is looking at engineering and traffic. And I will be right up front. It, to me, this doesn't talk, we should be talking more about also pedestrian safety. And I think the town manager mentioned, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I think you mentioned too, we had a discussion at our December 14th work session where we talked about possibly having painted crosswalks. To me. To me, this is a great place to do a trial, a, to see how it works.
So we've-
And to me, we ought to be doing that, in my opinion, all over the town, town streets.
It's, it's great. I can show some, some great images. But we've been working in Baltimore City with the Public Arts Group there and have probably installed thirty or forty painted crosswalks, other street arts that is more-
I'm on the state's pedestrians, M.D.O.S. Pedestrians Subcommittee and we have a presentation from there.
Yep.
And I forward all that material to the staff.
Yep.
Has, has it been proven to be a traffic calming?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
And, and so that might be a-
Also a tourism generator. A tourism generator.
I love that. And between putting it down here low and then putting it on Centennial and St. Mary's, that might be the first way to, to go, bring the art here.
Have a demo project.
Yes.
This is, this is the opportunity to do that. And again, I'm biased because I'm not an engineer. I'm a former planner. And so, and it's in our comp plan. Goal number sixteen, we want to make the town a platable, walkable community. Well, here we go. We have a chance to do that, particularly since it's, you know, speed may or may not be a problem. And I'll, I'll believe, I understand that part. But again, and this is, we should be looking at complete streets. There's a movement across the country called Complete Streets, where they treat a street that everybody should be able to use it, whether it's a car, somebody walking or somebody riding a bike. And so it just, because unfortunately, and you mentioned the state standard, that's under fire because it was written back in the sixties. And here we are, two thousand and twenty-two. And it doesn't even consider, you know, the full breadth of what I, because unfortunately, we're designing for cars and not for people. We're designing for speed and not necessarily safety. And I'm sorry if I'm preaching, but I get a little upset by that attitude. So I'm just, but also throw out, and you probably, and I'm sure Jamie, you've seen this before, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACCO.
NACCO, yep.
They have some wonderful publications-
They do.
That address these kinds of issues in both urban and rural and suburban settings. So again, to me, I would applaud for us, not me, but the town to do this. And we ought to leverage these kinds of things because it does so, so much good in terms of implementing our comp plan. It is, it is about safety and it is about tourism and it's about making Plata a much, much better place.
Chief, in your years of looking at this, have you had an opportunity to just go through Jamie's presentation and, and look at that? And what is your feel, since you're boots on the ground at all times here?
Yeah, I think it's a reasonable approach, maybe taking Centennial and St. Mary's in stages. What I do know, he talks about not having high accident frequency, which is true. But as a chief, I look at accident severity as well. At Glen Albin and St. Mary's, I would say fifty percent of the times, the vehicles leave the roadway and end up in people's yards. When you have little kids or something else, that's, especially with a park, that's bothersome. And I think the four-way stop there would, was merited a long time ago. I, I think what he's done is, he's confirmed what we've recommended.
Good, good. And taking it in stages, do you eventually see St. Mary's and Centennial as a four-way stop? Or do you think the art, you know, the, the, the traffic calming may be enough?
Well, it'll tell us, you know, if, if, if we can get people to, it's, it's not speeding. I, I think a lot of it's destructive driving that we deal with. People think that I'm doing twenty-five miles an hour and it's okay to hold my phone. Fortunately for most folks on, on collisions, unless it's really severe, we don't go back with subpoenas to see if your phone was active at the time. But I, I think quite a bit of what we see in town leads to destructive driving in some way or fashion. But I, I do think, I would be okay if we went with a four-way stop there. But taking in stages and then reexamining, I think is, is prudent.
Okay, thank you. You guys have anything that you want to add?
You comment, they, many people sometimes even think about it as being a four-way stop. Two days ago, I was coming, I was going west on Centennial and a lady was coming up on St. Mary's and she stopped. All of a sudden, we have three cars now in the intersection and nobody's moving. So I don't see it would be a problem to try a four-way stop. If it doesn't work, we can always go back.
You know better than, than we would if taking it back works very well. And I'm, I'm good either way. Just, I don't know once you put it up, if, if that's going to work or not.
I would say there's, my personal view is there's, if people are somewhat confused and treating it in part like an always-stop and others not treating it like an always-stop, you're probably better advised to treat it like an always-stop.
What you saw was frequent though. And anytime I go, I come to work that way every day, and I would say twice a week, somebody's sitting there thinking it's a four-way stop.
Yes, thank you, Matt Challenger Ward Two. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick, for putting this together. One of my questions was, if you have crosswalk art without a stop sign, can that also be, I mean, the opposite of traffic calming as far as other people? Like if I'm not used to that traffic art and I slow down to, to view the traffic art, I'm not supposed to stop there as there isn't a four-way stop currently. That can also be a detriment.
Yeah, I mean, it could, it can certainly be a distraction. I mean, I think the, the general experience is that people slow down and take note of it. Now, whether they slow down, take note, and not take note of other things. And the, there's not huge bodies of research, but the fact that we've been able to get some installed on some pretty significant streets around the state tells me that if state highway is getting more comfortable with it, then, and it takes a lot to get state highway comfortable with things, then we might be moving in the right direction.
Takes years for them to get comfortable with it.
We are moving forward, I would say, on the beacons flashing finally. Sorry.
Thank you.
The other question I had is the concern about a stages approach is how do you, how would we measure that it's working or not when crashes aren't really the problem, speed's not really the problem, just anticipating essentially a problem? And we know there's confusion there. I mean, you kind of, when you drive through, you kind of assume that you're supposed to stop because almost everywhere around, you're stopping. But how, how would you measure success if it were a stages approach?
I, that's one of the things I asked my team and unfortunately, they came back with the, well, if there aren't any crashes. I said, I'm not sure that, that that's the right measurement, but it's hard to measure near misses, right? And I'd also say there's probably a good number of crashes that aren't reported. Little fender benders, people just, you know, exchange information and go on their way. And so there's probably a higher frequency that, that is not reported. I think it's just frankly, a judgment call. If you want to give clarity to the situation, install the four-way, put flags on it for a while to get it, you know, get notice to it and move on.
Yeah, I almost feel like it's better to go all the way than just do the traffic guard and see how it do. Because I just, I don't know. I mean, six crashes in eight years, or six years, eight crashes, is what it was, right? All after.
That was saying, that was Glen Albin. You know, now I didn't bring, I didn't bring the actual report with me. I apologize.
Well, eight crashes between twelve and six-thirty.
Yep.
We're doing so on page five of the study. But thankfully, you know, low-speed collisions, of course, we all know that doesn't mean they're not hurt. But I think, I think it's better to eradicate the confusion and go all the way in, in hopes that we are making ourselves more walkable for, for whatever walking traffic there can be in the future. So thank you for putting this together.
Do have one question. And you had made the comment in your, that, that people were concerned about the backup possibly to Charles Street. Has that ever been a problem? I don't see enough traffic there.
I, I don't see in a four-way stop situation, the intersection spacing isn't such that it would, it should cause a problem.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough volume there.
Just on, on days that we have masks, maybe. Director Stahl has his hand up.
Thank you, ma'am. Looking around, trying to figure out where Director Stahl was.
Well, I, I wasn't on the agenda tonight, so I did use the opportunity, but I am here. I, I just am doing things remotely. Interestingly enough, I just wanted to say several pieces. One, if you look at the lower picture in Jamie's presentation again, you can actually see, if they can put that back up again. Whoops.
Get rid of the parking?
No. Go, go back to the, the picture on the other side that shows the parking spaces.
Where the public works truck is?
No, the other, the other corner, the opposite corner would be the southwest corner there. The, the picture that was at the bottom where several things, one of the things, those three parking spaces, if you look at that one picture that they just took down. Let's see. Can I go back? But needless to say, if you look-
The recessed parking, right?
Yeah, it's the Bolton one.
Yes, that recessed parking slide. If you look at that picture, you can see the power pole on the other side. And you see, if you look straight at that lower picture, you see the power pole on the other side that's just to the right of the sidewalk.
Yes.
That's kind of the property line differential. So the property line is actually basically right down the middle of those parking spaces. We certainly could eliminate those parking spaces by just putting that in and allowing them to fill in their side, whatever it is. The one reason that those parking spots were actually there and what we would end up having to do is to give them a waiver on the number of parking spaces required for the square footage of the building. So there was a planning requirement and as Councilman Jenkins knows, we, we have a, a parking requirement for planning square footages within a building. And those spaces were necessary for that building. That, that building actually has a permanent agreement with the, the church to actually utilize parking during the week because it couldn't meet, there's, there's really only about seven or eight spots even, including these, that are actually part of that building property. So I just, I want to point that out. But it certainly wouldn't be hard to run sidewalks straight across there and eliminate those in the long run. I was initially, when I looked at the data for this several years ago, when we had this discussion in the Safety Committee and the chief brought it up, I actually was fairly opposed to doing the four-way stop because I didn't feel like there had been the accidents or that the speed was actually a problem. However, I will say that I've kind of changed my mind and I think now, because of some of the challenges, the, the mud building on the other side, where you see Jeff's truck sitting right there in that picture. Interestingly enough, the mud building has the same challenge. They just have enough parking spaces for the amount of square footage that they have for the building. So anytime we go eliminating parking spaces, we're doing that at a cost to that building of the number of required spaces. Neither of those buildings had a, had an excess number of spots. They were all basically right on or there was an exception for them in that situation. But to be honest, from a, an overall public works standpoint, I would like to say that I'm not opposed to going to the four-way stop. I think that ultimately, it does somewhat solve some of the issue there. But what I would like to suggest is that we do that in a timed sequence so that we do the Glen Albin intersection first and allow that to be implemented, putting up the signs and the warning banners about the new stop sign ahead and do that on that intersection first. Do the, try some of the things in the short term there as far as maybe temporarily blocking that parking and working with Tom Mudd to maybe try to temporarily block off a couple of spaces there. But ultimately then, after maybe three to six months of doing and implementing the first four-way stop at Glen Albin, come down and do that four-way stop at that location. And then, you know, think about how the crosswalks and all. Because to be honest, we will most likely repave from that intersection up to Charles Street in our next set of paving. So I just want to point out that we will be repaving that area and all the way down to Charles Street. So a lot of these things, when we restripe that, could be taken into account when we do the paving. So that was, that was on the list of streets to be paved and it didn't make the final cut for the last set of paving that we did. So most likely, this will be on the next set of paving. And I would recommend that whatever we do when we restripe everything in that area, that we could then restripe that whole area to make that work. That's all.
Thank you, Bobby. And I really agree with you on, especially Glen Albin. I think that that one is essential and should have been done, as the chief said, you know, yesterday and not, not tomorrow. So that one needs to get done, in my opinion, based on the information provided and from the chief as well as you. Jamie, that needs to be done ASAP. The other one, I, I hear both sides and, and I'm fine with either one. I do think that, that parking should be absorbed by the town because I get, well, I get probably five or six emails a year about why we don't enforce the SUVs that are, that park there. And it's always the same response, thank you, it's not ours. If we, if, if it's allowed and, and Director Harrington has the waiver for the parking, I think that that should be absorbed into the town and eliminated there. And then we go with St. Mary's in a few months. What do you guys think about that? Councilman Jenkins?
I would, I, I think Mr. Stahl makes a great point that you sequence it with St. Albans and St. Mary's. I think that's, having ridden my bike through quite, quite often, there is sometimes a speeding problem because they come down that hill and they kind of pick up speed as we're heading back towards St. Mary's.
Absolutely.
But I, I think that makes a lot of sense is to start there first, get a sense of where we are. You have the warning, people kind of get used to it and move back to St. Mary's. As to the parking issue, this is probably a larger issue, but we've had discussions before about our parking regulations. Maybe out of date because we're always getting waivers. What I read in the literature across the country now, and Jamie probably has seen this as well, we have too much parking, hard to believe, but we have some, we're, we're overparked. And so it seems to me this is part of a larger issue that maybe, again, go back and look at our parking ordinance as well. But what Mr. Stahl said, I would totally agree with.
Thank you. Councilman Goldsmith, what is your final assessment on this?
I think it's, as, as the Jenkins has said, the too much parking. I know Ms. Harrington is looking at that and it actually has a proposal on the books to change that. And maybe just take a look and say, okay, if we do go to the new direction, do we still need those three spots? If we don't, then we're fine at that point in time. Now they have to worry about a waiver. I do think your comment also, as far as picking up traffic going down the hill, if there's going to be a stop sign at the bottom of the hill, then that's going to control that speed a little bit, I think, too. Knowing they've got to stop. Right now, they know I've got an open road, I can continue on through. Hit that little bump, bounce a few times and I'm fine.
Not that you've ever done that.
So I, I think putting the, the four-way stop there is, is ideal. And I think would actually help calm traffic and potentially save lives. The St. Mary's and Centennial, I think a four-way stop there is appropriate too. But your comments as far as cycling and sequencing is good.
Okay. And Councilman Challenger, your final thoughts?
Yes, thank you. I do agree with you, Madam Mayor, that as far as priorities go, of course, Glen Albin, top priority. I, I would voice concern about taking away parking spots that perhaps, you know, first off, we said they needed them and it was required. And now there's going to be, if we're going to put a four-way- And now there's going to be, if we're going to put a four-way stop here at St. Mary's and Centennial, do we need to take away those parking spots? Or as Councilman Goldsmith mentioned, looking at our whole policy in totality first is probably, I think, the better way to go before making any action on those at this intersection, especially since by all the pictures I can see, it looks like they're being used. So I think four-way, both places, priority Glen Albin. But looking at incorporating traffic art at the crosswalk is a great idea if we're going all the way with it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Manuel.
I would just say if we are transitioning to a four-way stop at Centennial and St. Mary's, really the, we'll call it half-on-street parking there is less of an issue because if you're coming to a stop, then sight distance isn't as important because it is an always-stop. So I don't think the parking becomes that big of an issue at that point.
And I don't see it utilized very often, do you? I only hear about it when there's SUVs there.
There's a Tesla that parks there every morning. And something else to remember, that's a bus stop, too.
Oh, did not know that.
So I think it's a middle school bus stop, but at that corner. So a four-way stop is just going to protect the kids as well.
Okay. Good, good. All right. Jamie, so do you have the consensus of what?
I don't think Jamie cares. I have the consensus which will implement.
Of course I care.
I have Director Harrington with her hand, she's waving a lot. Okay, Director Harrington.
Sorry. I know it's a little difficult when we have the in-between virtual slash in-person. But I was going to say, we've been utilizing the ITE Parking Generation Manual. So what we can do is an analysis of that shopping center and the parking agreement that the town has with the church and take all of that into consideration to see how much parking would be required under the ITE versus what we have right now and what's in our code and make a little bit better informed decision on whether or not those parking spaces can be temporarily or permanently removed and see how things go.
Fantastic, thank you. It is all about safety for our residents and guests here. So Jamie, I greatly appreciate you doing all this. It follows up what the chief has been trying to do for years. And now with the engineer, it's awesome. So thank you. Appreciate both of you being here. All right. Brings us to 2.3 Personnel Handbook Update. I believe that would be, Michelle, is that you?
I can take it.
All right. We've got Mr. Manuel that's going to take it.
Yeah, as you were aware, last year, I believe it was June 17th, the president declared, trying to get the correct name of the holiday, Juneteenth National Independence Day, a federal holiday. Town council met in a special meeting to sort of follow in suit and declare a town holiday as well. If it's the will of council to continue recognizing this as a holiday, we need to amend our personnel manual to include it within our holidays. Our holidays are listed within our personnel manual. So we will need to amend that section of our personnel code to include Juneteenth National Independence Day as a holiday.
Since it is a federal holiday, it has been recognized as a federal holiday. I am not opposed to that at all. Counsel, open it up to you.
I guess I have a question there. Some organizations, they will give a limit. Say there's 20 federal holidays, so you could have 15 of them. So how do we stand on that? Do we recognize all federal holidays or do we have a limit in there?
I think Michelle's on the call. Michelle can probably better speak to this. I'm not sure that we acknowledge all federal holidays. Some councils will adopt the federal highway, or federal highway, from our last conversation, or the federal holiday within their personnel code and they just recognize all federal holidays.
We recognize all federal holidays now. We have 13 right now.
There are 13 total federal holidays or we give 13?
Well, they're not all actual federal holidays. We get the day after Thanksgiving and Good Friday are town-paid holidays. And those are not federal holidays.
But we don't recognize, but we're open. We do recognize, but we are open on Columbus Day.
Yes.
And that was a trade-off. And correct me if I'm wrong, that was a trade-off that was made well before we were here that work on Columbus Day to get the day after Thanksgiving off.
Yes.
Okay. How would that impact us financially by having another paid holiday off? Come on, come on down. You're the next contestant. And just if you could push the button so we can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kevin Greenville, Town Treasurer. Adding one federal holiday would, you know, be the cost of one additional holiday for all employees. I'm assuming Public Works would be working that day in a certain limited capacity. They would be paid at a double time rate. And PD would be given an additional eight hours of holiday. They do it a little differently. They use it when they can, given their hours upfront. I don't have an exact number tonight for you guys. I could calculate it and send it to you. It's just as one day of our staff being off.
So would you, from a financial perspective, if we adopt Juneteenth as being recognized as a town holiday, would you suggest kind of like how we did with Columbus Day and the day off after Christmas, I mean, after Thanksgiving, kind of put one back on the books versus if we're putting on the books, take one off the books?
I think that's a decision for council to make. I don't think it's a huge fiscal impact to add one day that is a recognized federal holiday. Like I said, I can get you those numbers. I wasn't prepared with them tonight. I could show it to you.
So Michelle, I know you're on here. And what are the holidays that the town has paid holidays for? Oh, I'm putting you on the spot here.
Yes. New Year's Day, President's Day.
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, July 4th, Veterans Day, Labor Day.
Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, the day after Thanksgiving, and then Christmas is always.
Okay, and that would be the 11. So it's going to be, I guess, a council move. I do think that the correct thing to be done would be to adopt Juneteenth as recognized by the town. Whether or not it is a day off with pay is where we come in and decide that. I am not opposed to that as long as our treasurer says it is not going to put us under with that. And it is a day that is being recognized federal. And the state has adopted that as well.
How do we handle it when Christmas Day falls on a Thursday and then the federal government gives Friday off as well?
I believe typically, as long as Christmas does not fall on a Friday or Monday or maybe it's a Saturday or a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, we only get off one day. If it falls, if Christmas falls on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we get off Christmas Eve as well. Michelle, is that correct?
Yes.
Does that come to council for approval for Christmas Eve? Or is that written in the code?
It's written in the personnel code.
Okay, so that is, thank you, Brent, appreciate it. So that is something that would be an extra day that is, we would know about when we adopt the budget. But, all right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move of Juneteenth as a recognized holiday by the town, paid holiday.
And are we doing motions or?
Just recommendations. We'll bring the legislation back to you, similar to the other amendment in the police.
And you did that so well. My goodness, you were right there. Excellent recommendation. Do I have a consensus to follow suit with Councilman Trolinger, who said it so eloquently? He really is. I'm going to follow him, too.
I agree with him.
So we have, it's unanimous that we will move forward with recognizing this as a paid holiday for our fantastic employees based on a recommendation from Councilman Trolinger and supported by our treasurer. So thank you very much for that. And thank you, Brent, for providing the paid holidays that we do have here. All right. Do I need you still here, on here?
Am I dismissed? I don't know. I don't have the agenda.
You're dismissed. Thank you, you did well. All right. 2022 meeting schedule. Mr. Manuel.
Your word June will be Maryland's election primary will be held. Therefore, Maryland Municipal League is moved forward in the month. We'll cover the June 14th. So what the council sort of decided was to have our business meeting on the 21st and our work session on June 7th. What we did not contemplate was that is also the night of the Planning Commission meeting, which councilperson Evelyn Bryant Ward is a member and cannot be in two places at one time. She can be many things, but I don't know that she can do that. So I guess what we're asking is if it would be preferred to hold the work session on a Monday, on a Wednesday, if there is a preference, to move that work session because we were only going to have one work session in June based on the MML conference being moved forward because of the primary election.
And that would be, it wouldn't, I mean, with the June 7th, that was our work session. So if we eliminate that, we only have a business meeting that month.
That is correct.
I would ask council to look at their schedules to see if we could do it Monday, June 6th instead of Tuesday, June 7th, so that we do have a work session. And should we not have anyone that has signed up for the work session or we don't have a lot of business to do? We can always eliminate that one. But I think we really should have a work session on that. Councilman Jenkins?
I would agree because I assume, it's hopeful that we've already been through the budget. It won't be any spillover from the budget adoption. I mean, but, and just note that June 6th is D-Day, but that's okay. Sorry.
That might be good. I don't know. Councilman Trolinger, are you okay with the Monday?
Mondays are preferable, I think.
Okay. And Councilman Goldsmith, where are you going to be Alaska at this time or in June 6th? Are you going to be traveling someplace that you can join in virtually?
Well, I was going to do a Baltic cruise, my wife says no way in hell.
Okay. So the consensus is that we do have it on June 6th instead of June 7th. Thank you for bringing that up.
Been in the calendar.
All right. So that brings us up to Matters of Information.
All right. And I've included, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, Town of La Plata Urban Tree Canopy Inventory. Vendor will be in town starting tomorrow. I've attached their sort of press release to the agenda. So just to make you and the public aware, if you see vehicles riding around, they're there for a purpose.
Chief, have you had any calls on?
She posted up on our Facebook site, share it, but nothing yet.
Okay, good, good.
We did receive correspondence. I think initially we thought they would begin yesterday, but I think their kickoff is going to be tomorrow and they're going to have a little bit. That's right. That's why we have no complaints yet. Will's Park, they're still getting things moving.
Fantastic, thank you. And then the community meeting announcement.
Yeah, and this is for the, I'm not sure what we're calling it these days. The Radio Station Road Side Path is what I think we received the grant funding under. But the kickoff meeting will be Wednesday night here in this room. Once again, I've attached the flyer to the agenda for council's institutional knowledge as well as anyone from the general public that's interested and would like to attend.
Wonderful. Any other Matters of Information, counsel? Do you have anything that you would like to add? All right. So future work session topics.
All right. We have the Eternal Oar Police Lodge 151 presentation next week as well as Hawthorne Yards Annexation. That will come back before you. That was the sort of unfortunate that we had the wrong documentation. So and the council made the recommendation to the Planning Commission, not with the latest and greatest presentation. So we are going to have all the proper documents loaded for your consideration. And I guess I'll ask for a recommendation to move that to the Planning Commission for comprehensive plan compliance as well as designated zoning. And also, we will have the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, proposed spending plan back before you next week for consideration. And then I guess adoption consideration if everything goes well at the council meeting the following week.
And I believe in the upcoming would be the Developments Rights and Responsibility Agreement will be discussed again. I don't know if that'll be next week or next month.
We're still working on that, yes.
Okay, good. All right.
Madam Mayor, can I just, I guess, add a comment or something that we talked about earlier, but perhaps it can come up again? Water use, the gray water use? I mean, I know we had kind of talked a little about. I was just curious if that could be.
Yeah, that on the April.
Brought forward.
April Agenda. Director Stahl has a presentation already prepared. There may be some age on that presentation, but it's prepared and it's ready to roll because it's a process the town has investigated years ago.
Yep. That's terrific. Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Exactly what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, any other comment? Go ahead, Councilman Goldsmith.
Issue that obviously we've been looking at for 10 years or something here in the town. And when we first took office, it was one of the big thing. And that was basically tell me a Phoenix running area as far as who owns the parking spaces. There's no HOA type thing. We probably need to address that and get some resolution so we can tell them you can be established in HOA or we're stuck as we are now forever. And we got a new attorney. I know we've been busy as could be and it has not been a high priority issue. But if we get time, I think more to look at.
And that's a good point because I also think with Clark's Run, they are not in good standing right now with their HOA. Is that something that can be resurrected? And some of the other ones. I just think it benefits the neighborhood if they do have an HOA because they can police it themselves.
Thank you for bringing that up because I know, and Mary as well, because I've had lots of conversations with folks in the town, but also in Clark's Run. And there's just a lot of different versions of how do you do it and the costs. It had been confirmed that ours has run out. And so this is a great time. I know we're busy, but it's really, there's a lot of interest in this. The issue has always been, though, how do you pay for it and then how do you enforce it?
Right, right.
So, and I've been very upfront with them by telling, look, you know, we can certainly want to help you, but we just don't know what it costs. But understand, if you go down that path, you got to charge, there may be a fee involved, which is okay. But you got to enforce it because if you don't enforce it, you're going to have some issues.
And the town certainly should not be the HOA.
No, that, and I've made it very clear that we're not in the business of doing that. We don't enforce those.
No, not at all. We have enough going on. I don't think that, I don't think the chief would like to be. Would you like to be in charge of the HOAs?
And I know the town, I mean, we met with the residents and they were very engaging. Interested in their community and the town invested in making improvements out there. So it would behoove us to kind of move that forward as well.
We just need to take that next step. Thank you, Councilman Goldsmith and.
Thank you.
Councilman Jenkins. Any other future work session topics or anything? And I encourage council, if you think of something, definitely email Mr. Manuel so that we can have it on the future agendas. That brings us to a public comment. If there's anyone who would like to. If there's anyone who would like to speak this evening, I ask that you state your name, your address, whether you're in the incorporated town limits. And you try to limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone tonight that would like to speak? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, see you guys next Tuesday.
Thank you. Everybody be safe.
Levin, Tim.
Thank you, Brent.